Good evening, I'm calling the Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 School Committee Meeting to Order. Patrick is unable to be here, so I am lead meeting. I'd like to invite BSA Troop 105 to come lead the pledge.
We get to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in this world with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments tonight? No, thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda? And under communications?
Yep, so in your packet, there's actually two things. So I know Sabrina wanted, Katrina wanted to plug tomorrow, the CPAC meeting that's coming up, right?
Yes, so there's a sensory-friendly holidays event coming up on Monday, November 18th at 6:30. So we'll be talking about different ways to make holidays more friendly for those with sensory differences. There will also be childcare available and we'll be making a calming jar. So kids can walk away with a little tool to have over the holidays. And we're excited, it will be at the Pembroke Community Center, 6:30 to 8 on the 18th. And I have flyers here if anybody wants me.
In your packet, I shared with you the communication that came out from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education last Wednesday, November 6th. In regards to the MCAS, it's more just kind of like an FAQ on kind of where are we at right now. Obviously, we are looking for or awaiting new guidance. The law would take effect on December 5th, 2024, so there'll be something that comes out right before that as well. We do have a couple of students at Pembroke High School that are sitting for the November retake for both the math and the English. The English was the 6th and the 7th, I believe, the math is this week, right?
Today and tomorrow.
Today and tomorrow. So we've asked students to still sit for those exams as the direction here kind of outlines.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on this?
So you're, we're still continuing to do the MCAS and use it as a tool rather than?
Right, so you know, in a roundabout way, what, what the vote does is kind of put it back on local control on what your graduation requirements are. So we would need to have a conversation on the direction that we're looking to go in Pembroke. I'm sure there will be some communities that continue to use MCAS as a graduation requirement. We'll need to have a conversation here on what those requirements would shift to or from as we move into the future.
That's better.
So, so once we get the last guidance on December 5th, once we get the guidance on December 5th, I would anticipate a education subcommittee meeting, getting together and starting to talk about what the, what the change, a potential change means for us.
And one thing they mentioned at the MAS C conference was that most likely there will be guidance coming out from DESI. So that sounds like around that date, we'll hear about it.
Thank you.
I have one more thing for communication. So there's the tree lighting coming up and they're doing a food drive, it was in the newsletters. If you bring a can of food or something, dry good to school, you can use one of these little tickets to win. It's a golden ticket, so you can potentially win a ride with Santa, I believe. Oh, you have front row seats to see at the holiday event, tree lighting event, so.
And this collection bins at each of the schools.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, the warrants are being circulated. And next up is the minutes from Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. I sent in one minor edit. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
Nope, I sent my edit in.
So I need a motion to accept them as amended?
So moved.
For a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, how are you just?
Okay, hello everybody. So I'm going to present tonight on the new IEP form. So last year, I talked a little bit at school committee level, especially when we were going into budget season, about some of the work we had been doing administratively to get ready for the rollout of the new IEP. So the new IEP is both logistical kind of changes with forms, as well as kind of theoretical shift in some of the principles set forth by DESI for us as district. So some of the guiding principles that have been defined is really just making sure that we are focusing the new IEP on the student. I think traditionally, that has been the focus, but the new IEP form even requires us to do that in a, in a higher level, really focusing in on the student's vision as well as family and team, but really that student being the center of the new IEP. We also want to make sure that we're moving beyond just compliance. We're talking about engagement with families, we're talking about transition planning, using that kind of vision on where a student wants to be within that school year, as well as long-term. We talk about five years and then as we get into students age 14 and over, we talk about kind of transition planning after high school or post-22. Kind of how we got here, again, I talked a little bit about this last year. There was quite a cycle of kind of DESI had set forth kind of stakeholder engagement, guidance documents. There was a lot of professional development, so it was certainly a long process over the last couple of years. It started with more so stakeholders giving feedback on the current, the previous form, rolling out some guidance documents, getting feedback, going, DESI went to different stakeholder groups everywhere, from sped directors to advocates, attorneys, and then kind of circling back over those to refine them. And then providing over the last couple of years, more professional development. We've been using what's called the trainer, train the trainer model, which is really the admin getting trained. So directors, training team chairs, training sped staff, and then obviously working with families and other engagement groups as well. So as you can see, there were some pilot schools that did roll out this new form last school year as a district. I made the decision kind of collaboratively that we would wait just to see what kind of kinks had been worked out. And there were certainly some of the forms that pilot districts had some issues with, so those were kind of rectified. And then all schools, including public schools, as well as added districts, special education schools, must use this form starting in November, so starting this month. We rolled this out right at the beginning of the school year, just so we started kind of the year with a clean slate. So thinking about, I don't know why this slide got small, there we go, oops, sorry about that. So thinking about kind of where we, we've been, as I mentioned, we spent last school year from January all the way through the summer with some grant money, training our staff, really that train the trainer model, the special education. Team chairs and I, training our staff during professional development days. They were allotted some hours this summer to start unpacking kind of those forms, working on some of the upcoming meetings and things that they had, as well as working with our student information system. We use a system through frontline called eSped. Last May, I did a presentation, a pretty lengthy one, to CPAC. I've also met with CPAC in September, didn't have many participants, but we did go over kind of the key components again. I handed out some documents for families to use as a guidance, which are linked in this further along in the presentation. General educators, we did some overview for them during those first couple PD days. So I did kind of a overview for general educators about what they should expect for changes, both during team meetings, as well as working with special ed staff. And then paraprofessionals, just this past couple of weeks, on early release day, I did an overview for paraprofessionals on the new IEP and really what they should expect as they get the new forms and how to understand those accommodation pages. So when we think about the new IEP form, there are a lot of kind of what I call systematic logistical changes to the forms. As I mentioned, the vision is a huge part of that, really focusing in on that student vision and how we work to start at that student vision and expand as a team, as with families as well. The transition planning forms, as I mentioned, once a child turns 14, we start, we need to start planning for, you know, post-secondary, what that looks like into adulthood. I'm making sure students have the skills to be able, you know, going into adulthood, to be able to, you know, live functioning, working, whatever their goals are, whether it's college or not. We think about students who stay with us from 18 to 22. We also talk about the supports and services and some of the agencies that we help families connect to. We send referrals out to those agencies such as DDS, DDS, DD, DDS, et cetera, DMH, to make sure that we are providing support for families and students post-22. Couple of the other sections that have changed, the student profile page is much more specific for students who present with autism, who are English language learners, or who require assistive technology in order to communicate. In addition, the key summary page, is those people familiar with that? That's, used to be this one long form where we did more of a summary, there was lots of paragraphs. We talked about everything from interests of the child to former, former testing scores. It was pretty lengthy and it was very narrative form. So the IEP really has shifted into doing more like broken down sections and chart-based, much easier to read for the reader, whether it's a family member, a general ed teacher receiving it, or a special education teacher writing that. So it's now broken into four sections, focusing, focusing in on academic skills, social, emotional, behavioral, communication, and then any other additional areas. In addition, the accommodations and modification page, they are categorized now into different sections based on, you know, whether we're, how we're presenting information, how we're expecting a child to respond. Is it something we're changing in their setting or their performance as far as assessments? And then the service delivery grid, how we explain how we're going to provide those services, now has a separate section for what's called extended school year, so ESY, which is more or less summer school for students who qualify based on significant regression. So I talked a lot about this even since last spring, just so families kind of understood what to expect, as well as educators from general ed all the way to special ed, including paraprofessionals, about how to prepare better for meetings. So we've provided families with, again, some documents that I'll, I'll show the links to, that helps families kind of get organized and prepare for meetings. And just making sure that everyone involved knows that kind of the team meetings are going to be more of a training this year. We did start out using smart TVs and tried to navigate kind of typing in the moment live and that we had more difficulty, more from families giving feedback about that the, that they had a hard time keeping up or staff was trying to type and summarize and correct things. So we shifted based on feedback from both families and staff to not using these. But we do hand out a hard copy for families every meeting so that, that we're going through and kind of training them on, it's really like page by page and section. So the meetings are, are lengthier this year, just so that we're making sure that families can effectively participate. In addition, some special education liaisons, especially at the secondary level, were piloting more of a draft IEP. So at annual reviews, which are, once a child's already found eligible, during those mid kind of cycle reviews, we talk, we call them annuals, so once a year, we have to meet to review the IEP and propose a new IEP. We are providing drafts for families. Drafts are just that, they're just ideas and thoughts and then gathering input from anyone else at the team and then tweaking them and proposing them formally. That has been helpful from the secondary level, not only to be more prepared, but for, to be more transparent on kind of IEP goals. We do have some elementary teachers interested in that, but we had decided to roll it out as a draft format at the secondary level this year to start. As I mentioned, I worked with general educators just so that they had a better understanding of what to expect at meetings. Because one of the guiding principles is really to focus in on the student's strengths, not just those deficits that we typically sit around on the table and talk about the negatives and where a child's lacking and some of their challenges. Really focusing in on strengths to help the student kind of guide their vision as well. Obviously, we've always provided data to families when we're talking about proposing goals, discussing, you know, service, services, what a child needs, but really asking general educators to be an active participant in that role as well. And then thinking about prior to that meeting, that vision. You know, thinking about the trusted adult isn't necessarily always a special education liaison. Sometimes it is a general ed teacher, a specialist, a paraprofessional, so everyone really coming together to be able to consult prior to a meeting to understand what a child needs and providing them insight to what we're going to be talking about at an upcoming meeting about them. So, sorry about that. Similar with the role of paraprofessionals, I did some work just having, helping them kind of understand how, what they could bring to the table, really understanding those accommodations that are used in the classroom prior to a team meeting, going through them to be able to share with the special ed liaison, these are the ones the child's using, these are ones I find effective, a child has been declining this accommodation. And then providing, you know, any inquiries on, you know, I've asked the child what they think they need, because paraprofessionals often work with our students, you know, in that inclusionary setting and have some good data on what a child needs to be successful in that setting. This is being touchy. It's probably going to move twice now. So that vision section that I keep mentioning, again, before the meeting, really working with the student and the parent, reaching out about vision questions. I'm going to share some examples, when we were going through the trainings and that train the trainer model, even at the admin level, thinking about students who may be nonverbal, how are we going to gather that information from a student who may have, you know, intellectual impairment, be nonverbal, or students that are in our preschool level? How are we going to have them understand what we're asking of them? So we did some work on creating some kind of visual templates. I'm not having success tonight. And so, simple things like this, this is just one example about how I feel about school, favorite things to do, when I grow up, I want to be, and having kids use visuals to kind of predict their vision for themselves, even for students who may be either low functioning or younger. And then some other examples, just asking, we came up with some template language, just thinking about questions that we can normalize and template to students, you know, favorite parts of the school day, thinking about what you'd like to get better at as far as learning, where do you want to be at the end of this year? And then as kids get older, obviously, we talk about interests improving and strategies for effectiveness. So just some examples. During the IEP team meeting, whether it's the liaison and students over the age of 14 are invited to the meetings, so they may share their own vision and participate in that discussion. If not, we're talking, you know, working through the liaison or parent, asking them, you know, what their child would like to do, thinking about a student's participation. Sometimes there's interest inventories that we give out, especially as students get into the high school and 18 to 22 population, thinking about what their career goals are. And then obviously with parent and input, we've, this is a DESI document that I had shared out in September with CPAC as well. This is a good guidance and this is linked in here that we'll post as well. It's just tips for parents, like before the meeting, during the meeting, after the meeting, how they can help out and effectively participate even when their children are younger. So it's a good guidance document for them. And this is, I just have some pages in here, just so you guys could see what it looked like. So this is the vision page, as you can see, the questions are asked this year. I want to learn for younger kids as they get older, after I finish high school. These are my employment, my career, my college readiness goals. The student profile page, as I mentioned, really identifies students' disabilities and then whether they fall under certain categories. And the new form, there is no, what I would call, missing anything in the form. So previously, we always have to go through what's called an autism checklist. So if a child presents with autism, we need to make sure that we are addressing all possible deficits that typically are characterized, characteristics of a student who presents with autism. That's, used to be just a piece of paper we would bring to the meeting, now it's built into the IEP. So this IEP form and our student information system populates if we check a student has autism. So there's no kind of forgetting things that need to be addressed for a student with disabilities. Same with English language learners, our ESL teachers come to our team meetings and there is a section that we require them to fill out and help us with that really talks about a student's English proficient level and how that may affect them in the classroom, as well as assistive technology. And this is where that key summary page I mentioned, which used to be that long narrative page, is now broken into four sections. So you can see right here, it's the academic page, so we talk about the academic performance in all the areas, strengths or interests of the student in those areas, and then how a student's disability in that particular area may affect them in the classroom. So what does that look like? How is a student going to present? What are some of the things that we need to be aware of? And then you can see the autism question, and here's the autism checklist. Not all of these pertain to a student with autism, but we are required to make sure that we are addressing. For instance, you know, does a student have difficulty developing social interaction skills with proficiencies? If not, we have to make sure that we're addressing that and explaining. So is that accommodations? Is that a social skills group? Is that goals? The bullying statement is in there, so we are required under the bullying law to make sure that we are addressing if a student is unable to advocate for themselves due to disability or possibly being a bully and what we can do to help and support them during the school day. Here's the communication section. Again, we have to answer specific questions if a student needs an AAC device. So that is a device, students, some students require. We talk about low-level devices of such things as iPads, all the way up to more complex. Even visuals are considered low-tech, if a student's unable to communicate and/or nonverbal. Additional areas, so we talk about things like fine and gross motor, if a student is deaf, hearing, blind. This is a section, again, there is really no room for error. There's lots of information in here that populates for us, so we're assuring that we're covering all areas of a student's IEP. The transition planning forms used to be a separate component, so it was almost like an addendum to an IEP. Now they're embedded within and it does require the team to go into pretty good detail about a plan for students. We talk about what happens during the meeting, same thing, gathering information from students, knowing if a student is going to be on a diploma track or a certificate of completion or attendance, as we say, what, how we get a student to that point and what kind of track or courses they need to take, what kind of supports in school. Then we also go into, as I mentioned, thinking about community agency involvement for students that may qualify for that. We talk about decision-making and transfer of rights. So here's one of the forms, you can see we talk about post-secondary transition. What is the education, training, employment? employment? What are the student's strengths and how their disability may impact them in those And then we talk about what the track is, and that may change year to year, but are they on track to graduate? Are they going to earn a diploma? And then we, we need to outline how we're going to make sure that a student's course of study kind of follows that. The community engagement and agency connections, we are required to send what's called a 688 referral out to agencies if students may qualify. Families can do that as well, but as a school system, we do do that. And then transfer of students' rights, we talk about more specifically up here, options for students. When students turn 18, they need to make a decision, whether they're going to make their own decisions, whether it possibly be a joint decision, so shared decision-making with their care guardian or parent, or they're going to give full decision-making rights to their families. Sometimes families do go to probate court and get legal guardianship of students, so students who are unable to make those decisions typically in our, you know, more severe disabled students that have cognitive impairments and unable to make those decisions. There are times where parents become court-appointed legal guardians prior even to the, the age of 18. The accommodation and modification pages, when we talk about accommodations, those are things we provide in the general education setting that supports the instruction but doesn't change it. A modification is when we're altering that, whether that's the instruction or the content. In an accommodation, some of the examples, we think about providing extra time, using assistive technology, prompts, clarifying directions, preferential seating. When we talk about modifications, we're talking about, we're changing that curriculum or instruction to a level that is not what is happening in the general education setting. So we might, content could be simplified, it could be thinking about assignments and tests that are reduced, alternative assignments, or some sort of other instruction that may happen, say, outside of the classroom. We think about reading instruction, but child's not responding to the general education programming, we may provide specialized instruction in that area, and that's considered a modification. That's just some more information about, again, as I mentioned, the presentation, so how we're presenting information, how a student responds, timing and scheduling, and setting an environment. Again, it used to be one long list on one page and a teacher or a paraprofessional would have to go in and try to make sure they're doing every, oh, am I supposed to give this to the student? Or are they supposed to do that? Is that something we're supposed to change in the classroom? Now it's very segmented out, so there's four sections and very easy to read and understand what a child needs and when. Same with modifications are broken down into content, instructional, and then output. That's just what that looks like. Call this MCAS page. Now we're just going to call it the state district-wide assessment page, just in case. And so this is where students are, district-wide assessments as well, allowed to have certain accommodations that they are routinely having in the classroom. So we always say, we want to make sure that those are accommodations that the student is regularly using in the classroom. If so, then they would qualify for them on the MCAS. Some are more what we call standardized and other are more specific, but this page kind of outlines in which subject and what accommodations students receive. We move on to the goals. Not much different than previous, just again, that chart format. We talk about writing a measurable goal, we talk about baseline, so where is a student at? What kind of current data do we have? How we set a measurable goal with a targeted kind of objectives? What kind of criteria for success? So how are we setting them up? How are we expecting them to demonstrate that goal? How are we going to measure it? And then how often are we going to check progress monitoring? So that's what that page looks like. Again, very chart-based, very broken out, much more systematic for any, the reader to kind of read through and understand each of the sections. Service delivery page didn't change much, other than kind of location, so we write the location of the services, whether that's in the general education classroom, a special ed setting, an office space, it could be another, it could be community, but that column is somewhat new. Additional pages that really haven't changed much are transportation, other than we need to make sure that we're outlining whether a child requires specialized transportation in, during ESY as well. So that is a question now on the IEP. And there is a separate section, as I mentioned, for extended school year services. And then this is the signature page, and sometimes we write things in there for additional information so that it's documented. There are times where students receive gen ed supports and families want that documented somewhere, so that's that section sometimes we use there, or we may say, you know, we're going to monitor progress in, you know, X subject and reconvene in six months. And that's the signature page, very explicit for families now. And that's it. And then this is just a link to the whole improvement project, so there's lots of different forms and information for families. Any questions? So riveting.
Well, yeah, so first of all, thank you.
I know it's a lot of information.
It's a whole new form, so I was just, I have like just a couple of questions and forgive me if I, this is like basic question.
It's okay.
Do you, like, I see that the educators all have the professional development. Do the administrators do it as well, like the, the school principals and, you know, does everybody do the same professional development or?
So for the team chairs that are in charge of special education? Is that what you're asking?
No, I was thinking more along the lines of, I would think that like the principals for each of the schools would probably need some kind of professional development so they can know what the teachers are talking about in the special education. Is that something that's done?
So we did an overview at our SLT, our strategic leadership team last year of the new IEP, so they got a training similar kind of to this, not to the level of the special education staff, but our team chairs kind of head the, as like a department head in each of the buildings, whether it's assistant principal and/or Megan Cullum at the secondary level, is there to answer questions just like any of our content area coordinators would be.
So is that usually, and I just don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, the model's different depending on districts, but most principals don't head a special education team, like teams. It's rare that a principal would be, you know, facilitating a special ed meeting.
So, no, I, you know, I get that, but like wouldn't, aren't they usually like the first point of contact when there's an issue or no?
Not usually, so.
Not in special ed.
Yeah.
They just skip over and go straight to?
So typically, we always say like go to the liaison first, so who's been assigned, you know, the special ed teacher, or if it's just social emotional, like school psychologist, that's your liaison, that's what we talk about to families. And then if they have concerns, they go to the team chair. So at the elementary level, all the assistant principals and middle school, and then Megan Cullum at the secondary. If there's still concerns from there, usually I'm, I'm stepping in. There are times where principals go to special ed meetings, but it's pretty rare. It's usually when it's more, maybe all encompassing other issues, kind of crosses over, or it's, there's a contentious meeting and principal wants to go to support kind of the process.
Okay, all right, well, that makes sense. Then I, you know, so at the IEP meeting, generally speaking, the principals aren't there, it's usually just the teachers and the special ed, you know?
Yeah, there are, I want to say never, because sometimes principals, like I said, depending on the case, they'll go, especially if there's, you know, other factors, attendance issues, you know, a principal, like Ashley Cross goes to some IEP meetings because she's, you know, was the previous team chair. So there are times that some principals go, but it's not routine, like it's not an every week kind of thing.
Okay. And then I was also thinking like, this must be difficult, even though the teachers went through the professional development, I would imagine learning a whole new IEP would be difficult. Have you had any hiccups with the teachers? And how long do the teachers, it's like a two-fold question. How long do the teachers, how long do you give them to like review the new IEP so that they're familiar with the students? Because that's a lot of information, right? Brand-new IEP.
Yeah, so part of that grant work, we did give teachers allotted hours during the summer to come in during the last few weeks of August to start like looking through the new IEP, inputting things. They obviously get to know their kids every year, even if it's not a new IEP form, but from meeting to meeting, we have 10 school days to kind of produce the IEP, as long as we provide families with summary, summary of the meeting. It's actually gone pretty smoothly, I think because everybody's learning. It's not just one person learning something new, so they're relying on each other and collaborating. We've done a lot of, like, even last year, work on not template boilerplate language, but like, you know, these are the accommodations that would belong in, you know, in setting. These are the ones that belong in instruction or things like that, so that, it's kind of has helped guide them.
Yeah, interesting.
I don't want to say it's been no extra work, because it's, it's a lot. I've had to, so for added district students, Megan and I both like, you know, oversee a small population for me, but even me inputting, like, it takes some time, but the more familiar you get with the sections, the easier I get, so. Our teachers have done a great job, and they're honestly, they're really liking the forms. Like I said, they're pretty explicit and there's no room for kind of error, like, oh, I missed that, so.
Yeah, that was actually my question. Do you feel like it's like well-received and like, or is it like a really, because it's a lot different?
Yeah, it is different, so that's a learning curve, I think, with anything new that you roll out, but I think it's been pretty positive, so.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it seems like it leaves a lot less room for misunderstanding. Like, it's just things are more clearly laid out, so that makes sense that it seems to be that folks are liking it. That's good to hear. And are there, I know that there's other trainings during the year, like the Federation has, that anybody can attend for the new IEP. Is that something, I'm sure you, you all are sharing that information with staff in case they want to go.
Is the liaison or team chair outlined in this so that a parent can go back and find out who that person is if they're unsure?
Yes, and so the, it's called the admin data page. At the bottom of it, it's your point of contact, so it'll say like special ed teacher and then their name, and then the person signing it is the team chair. So the signature page is the, the person who's facilit, you know, either facilitated or heading the special ed department, so, either way. And then my name's at the top of all the IEP, so.
And is it all still being physically printed? This isn't digital emailed, right?
If parents request, we do do that, but it's standard to mail, so.
David, do you mean?
Actually, I remember, again, great presentation, by the way. In previous years, I think we saw our numbers were going up, like significantly up. Has that leveled off or is it continued to?
No. So it'll be interesting this year, we've gone up, just like the state, it's about like a 1% to 3% each year as, as far as special education numbers.
I thought we were a little higher. I, again, maybe I'm, I might be.
Not than the state, we run right below the state traditionally, so I think last year, I want to say it was like 17% at our, at the data point we looked at, and the state was like 18 something, so. But yes, traditionally years, like when I first started in this position, we were like 13% of our students, so.
And does that number include 504 plans as well as IEPs? Or is there, are they separated out differently?
I separate it out, so.
That was my next question. Should we just kind of mention what are the difference between IEP and 504? Am I opening a can of worms here?
No, so section 504 accommodation plan is, that falls under more IDA, and even though IDA individuals with disability education act governs special education too, that protection is also for students with, or adults with disabilities. So a section 504 plan is for someone who presents with a disability that impacts kind of their life, we call it life functioning, so it significantly impacts their abilities, whether it's seeing, hearing, walking, learning, and so that is not specialized instruction, that's more of like when I talked about supporting curriculum, those accommodations. While there's sometimes services in 504 plans, for the most part, it's just accommodation. So a section 504 plan is an accommodation plan.
And if I recall, you can't be on both though, correct?
Sometimes you, you are, so under, in, under, even in, on an IEP, you're still under the protection and the window of section 504 because you've been identified as having a disability. So you always have those protections, but there are, sometimes students have both. So they could be on an IEP for a reading disability, but they also have diabetes. Their diabetes isn't what's impacting their access and progress in learning, so we have a section 504 plan for medical accommodations, and then we might have an IEP for a reading disability.
I misunderstood that, thank you.
And there's no additional benefits, like you don't need to have both. If you have an IEP, that's fine. You don't need to go out and get a 504 plan.
No, so it, not for the same disability, so it's either one or the other if it's the same disability. So an IEP covers, still covers that umbrella of protections. If, you know, you have a neurological disability or health disability, you don't need a IEP and a 504.
Just clarifying, so nobody thinks they need to go get both.
Yeah, no.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions, no?
No, I think, I think it's great. I'm, I guess I'm curious about, I know it's been a lot more investment in time and training and things like that. Do you foresee needing additional resources for continued training for staff or any additional things that are coming out of the new IEP resource-wise?
I don't think so. I think because we've used that train the trainer model and allowed that professional development time, we also are allotting it during, you know, our PLC work, so staff can join that time and that group, correct? Yeah, at the faculty meeting level, so when staff are meeting once a month for PLC work, they can do that, the new IEP. So they're working together and collaborating. For instance, like our OT and PT, OTs and PT are working together to, to kind of streamline some of their work, as well as like, like I said, templates and figuring out what goes where as a group, so.
Great, awesome. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Talbot for the NEASC accreditation update?
Just because you're logged in, I just shared it with you so you can.
Sure. Everyone's going to see, oh no, they're not going to see my, I forgot, I don't have my, my computer plugged in.
Can I use your laptop? I just can't see that.
Do you want a paper copy?
Do you want to move this mic? Open, I'm like clicking through.
No, you're clicking on the TV, you're not clicking on the laptop. You're clicking on the TV.
Okay.
It's not connected to a laptop.
Here, I'll give you this clicker.
I thought it was your laptop.
No, 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 sorry. Do you want this paper? We can turn the TV.
No, 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 I've got it written in front of me.
Oh, perfect. So you just click when you're ready to move it? It's going to click over there, not over here.
No, it's all good, right, yeah. Thank you for your help, appreciate that.
It's like, why are you looking at me? It's not on my computer. You come looking at me, I'm like, what is it?
My fault, my fault, my fault. So I'll click here. Okay, so, thank you all. It's been a while since I've been in front of this committee, my first time this year, and I thought it was important, I asked Aaron if I could present the status update on our upcoming NEASC Accreditation Visit, which is happening a week from yesterday. All right, so the folks from NEASC will be here Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week. They're actually going to want to meet with you one of those days, and I'm working with Aaron about that as well. And so just, I just want to start with a refresher about what this whole process is for folks in the audience who may not know. The New England Association of Schools and Colleges is one of six accrediting universities, agencies rather, across the country. Obviously, the six New England states are part of our region, and there are others like the southeastern regional accreditation and so on and so forth. And the purpose of this visit is really for them to help us establish our own goals as we look to align to the NEASC accreditation standards, okay? So they have the standards for all six New England states, and those standards are similar throughout the country by by the way. We develop goals to meet those standards and they help us do that. All right? So it is self-driven, although clearly the foundational goals and the standards are set by them. And so these standards are a research-based set of practices and concepts that provide guidance to schools on all aspects of education, not just academic, certainly academic, but also civic and social elements as well. Now, the value of the accreditation is a question that I get asked a lot by people and it's of value to all of our stakeholders in that for students and families, it assures them that their needs are being met through a quality educational program. It grants confidence that their studies and educational experiences are as robust as their peers in New England states and throughout the country. All right. So they're confident that what they're being asked to do is consistent with what those peers with whom they're competing for college and careers. It's the same across the board. And it assures college reps and potential employers of their readiness. And so there is value to our students, to our families. And to us as teachers and administrators, there's value there as well. It provides professional pride, working in an accreditation institution. It provides opportunities for us to reflect and to grow. And I'll explain that process later on down in this presentation. It provides a sense of collegiality as we work together through the self-reflection process. And it gives us a sense of reassurance that what we're doing is, is sound, our practice is sound and in alignment with what other schools across the state and the nation are doing. To you folks here on the school board, there's value as well. As you are, as you know, you're ultimately responsible for the quality of public education in the town of Pembroke. And it assures the citizens of the town that your educational policies and plans are sound as well. It provides individual board members with a comprehensive knowledge of the inner workings of our school. And it provides insight for important policy and budget decisions. And then not to be left out, of course, the taxpayers, those citizens who don't have students in the school, but yet who pay taxes every day and, or every year, and they have a vested interest in all this as well. It assures the taxpayers that their money is being, are supporting a school whose programs are accredited through this process. It enhances the reputation of the entire community and has potential to positively impact property values. And it provides transparency to the citizens so they're aware that there is a formal process here, that the schools are held accountable. And, you know, we're working on a daily basis to achieve growth. And so we began the process for this particular visit next week, really three years ago. It's a 10-year, it's a decennial accreditation. But really, the planning for that visit heats up three years out. And so we started in the winter of 2021. I presented to this committee at that time, in fact. And the first step in the process is for schools to undertake that self-analysis, write a self-study that highlights what we think are our strengths and what our areas of growths are as we consider how well we align to their standards. And so we did all that and have been doing all that. But as part of that, we surveyed teachers, we surveyed students, we surveyed parents. Those were extensive surveys, seventy-five, eighty, in some cases ninety questions, how each of those stakeholders thought we were doing in terms of aligning to the standards. We wrote the self-study and submitted that in October of 2022 in preparation for a collaborative conference visit in December of 2022. And that collaborative conference is really their check-in. So a team from NEASC came, they visited our school. It's like the, it's like the quiz before the test. The next week is the test, right? This is the quiz. How are you doing in all this? And they gave us an awful lot of feedback. They read our report in terms of how well we thought we aligned to those standards. And they did their own little assessment and they, they wrote back to us in terms of whether they agree or not. And they helped us develop an action plan for what we thought might have been some of our areas of needs. At that time, our current juniors and sophomores were, I'm sorry, our current juniors, seniors were freshmen and sophomores. So they were here for that process. And again, as I said, they assessed the degree to which they agree with our ratings. And they helped us develop an action plan to help meet our own goals. And that's a change in their process. All right. So as some of the veteran educators may know, certainly Mary Beth would have been part of this as a teacher, there was a time where they didn't necessarily take our, there wasn't a self-study part of it. They just came and told us how they thought that we were doing and the goals were their goals. You need to do this. And I think they took some feedback from staff, from, from schools over, over years, I mean, really decades of this process. And they now have insisted and that the schools drive this. You guys tell us what you need and we'll help you get there. And I will say, this has been a refreshing change. All right. This is my third decennial accreditation visit in my career. One was as a teacher when I was teaching. One was as an administrator in Duxbury. Those were under the old way. And this is the first time, the third time I've done it, but the first time under this new model. And I can tell you, it's been really a refreshing process and a breath of fresh air. It's been much more enjoyable and in my opinion, much more productive. And so this is just kind of a, a little timeline visual here. The first thing we did, they said in the fall of '21 is that we prepared for the self-study by bringing everybody in the building up into a committee. And if I click on this link right here, you'll see this pretty cool document. Everyone in the building is on this chart in some way, shape, or form. Whether they were a, up here, the top of the, you know, Caitlin Almond, who was a history teacher, Katie O'Meara, who was an English teacher who has left the district, but they were the curriculum, I'm sorry, the accreditation coordinators with me. We had a steering committee full of people. That's the group, Caitlin and Moser, well, I can't see what the most is here, but you'll see the column, steering committee members. We had co-chairs for each committee. There's an administrative content supervisor who was one co-chair and a teacher was another co-chair to make sure we had, you know, that representation. And then the rest of the faculty was a standing committee member.
Excuse me, Mark. Are you in more than one committee?
No.
No? Okay.
No. Yep. And once we had that, we began planning, of course, for the self-study writing. We were trained by folks at NEASC. We then did the work to write that self-study. They came in December for the collaborative conference. And then we spent the past 20 months as a faculty, working on the action plan that was created for us so that we are now ready for the final step, which is of course, next week. And as I said now, what, what we're trying to accomplish here is to align to their standards. And there are five standards. And there they are right there, just kind of like the, with a general overarching statement of what each standard is. And that visiting team is going to assess the degree to which we align to their standards. Now, each standard has within it principles of effective practice. And so that's an overarching statement. Standard one, the learning culture promotes shared values and responsibility for achieving the school's vision. But what does that very broad statement mean? There are seven principles of effective practice listed within that standard. All right. And those principles define the expectation. They, they help define that very broad statement. And as I said, standard one has seven. In the entire rubric, there, there are thirty-two combined principles of effective practice throughout those five standards. There's seven in standard one. I think there are six in standard two. There's five in standard three, so on and so forth. Okay? Now, this is an example, if you drill down then on that, on that standard, this is standard one. And in addition to the principle of effective practice, there are descriptors for each of those principles of effective practice to further help schools identify what they need to do to meet that, that particular standard. And so if we just look right here, we drill down, standard 1.1 says, "The school community provides a safe, positive, respectful, and inclusive culture that ensures equity and honors diversity in thought," or diversity in identity and thought. That's one of the descriptors of, I'm sorry, principles of effective practice, one of them. And then here in this box, they're telling us what that could look like. These are ideas of how you could demonstrate that you meet that standard. All right? But as importantly, each standard has within it at least one foundational element. And those foundational elements are really the must-have. Schools must align at a minimum to each of those foundational elements in order to maintain their accreditation. They represent the building blocks of the standards. And so just to boil it down to brass tacks, what that means is if you don't meet each of those foundational elements, you cannot be accredited. The principles of effective practice do not have that same type of a yes or no, okay, assessment of them. There's a potential where we may not necessarily be demonstrating all of those principles of effective practice and still get our accreditation. These are the must-haves. In fact, this is what the rubric looks like. I'm sorry, let me go back before that. When they came for the collaborative conference, they gave us some feedback. And as you can see, I circled one of the foundational elements that we did not have at that time. We had the rest of them. But 1.2A says, "The school has a written document describing its core values, beliefs about learning, and vision of the graduate." Now, we have a written document that you folks have approved over the course of the year, is every year, that has our core values. It has our beliefs about learning, but it did not have the vision of the graduate. And it's an all-or-nothing thing, those foundational elements. That's the rubric right there for your foundational elements. Either you meet it by having all of the criteria, or you don't meet it because you have some or none. And so because we didn't have a vision of the graduate, at the collaborative conference, we were not able to say we met that foundational element. We knew that going in. As I explained to this committee back three years ago, we were looking forward to the collaborative conference so they could tell us how to achieve the vision of the graduate, how we would go about getting that. And they helped us develop that action plan. Okay? As you know, we do now have a vision of the graduate. And so we are confident we're going to meet all of these. I want to go back, but I don't know if I can do that. We have the rest of those foundational elements. Okay? Other pieces of feedback came not from the foundational elements, but rather from those principles of effective practice I talked about. And so this one is very similar to the foundational element in that it says, "The school has a vision of the graduate that includes the attainable, transferable skills, knowledge, understandings, and dispositions necessary for future success." And, I circle on the graphic, "provides feedback to families and the learners about their progress in achieving the vision." And so the foundational element says you have to have a vision of the graduate. The principle of effective practice says you have to have the foundational element and you have to have a process for reporting out to families their children's progress on attaining it. It's two different things. Okay? And so what I'm saying to you right now, as we sit here on the eve of the visit, we absolutely have the foundational, the foundational element met. But because this is a principle of effective practice, the rubric is different. It's not does meet or does not meet, meet. It's a, it's a broader and a, and a more forgiving or a more helpful rating scale for the rubric. And so it covers everything from not-yet-evidence to transforming. We have rated ourselves as a district as developing on that particular principle of effective practice. We have the vision of the graduate and we do have a process for reporting out on it. We do. And we've already done it once. We did it in June of 2024 on the term four report cuts. But I don't think it would be 100% honest to say that we're fully initiating it. I don't, I just don't think, it's not yet taken hold yet. I think that there's a number of certainly families who did not understand what we're reporting out on, the report cut on term four. I did field some phone calls and get some emails about that. I think if you ask students in our building in June, they may not have known about it. I am certainly hopeful that more will know about it now because we've been talking about it in assemblies and our teachers talk about it as they work on tests and quizzes that use the vision of the graduate skills to demonstrate mastery. And we're going to report on, out on that again at the end of term two this year and the, at the end of term four this year. And that will be a twice-a-year reporting out from this point moving forward. Okay? So I am being realistic about that. Okay? I think we've had the foundational element met. And I think that we have rated ourselves as developing as a school. And I'm hopeful that the committee will see that as well. And so when they came here for the collaborative conference, in addition to rating us on all of the principles and all the foundational elements, they gave us three priority areas to work on by the time they come back. And of course, they come back next week. Obviously, number one should sound very familiar. All right? It's the vision of the graduate and the process of reporting out on it. All right? The second priority, priority area talks about a comprehensive approach to active learning strategies, diversifying assessment methods, collaborating to foster deeper understanding of resource-based instruction. Our staff right now is undergoing some professional development around assessment strategies, their grading practices. What is the value of the grading practices? Are they measuring what they think that they're measuring? What does that grade and their report cut actually mean? Does it mean what you think it mean, means? Our content supervisors went on training earlier this fall and they've now come back. And we're spending department time, professional development days throughout the course of the year, engaging in those discussions. And so that is all the direct result of this priority area from the NEASC collaborative conference. Likewise, they've asked us to engage our teachers in a formal collaboration to examine a range of evidence to improve student learning. Our teachers are looking for more time to collaborate. All right? And so we have done, we have engaged as a staff on many ways for us to kind of make that happen. We, we haven't settled on anything. Right now, our staff has at least an hour a month formally in either a faculty or department meeting to collaborate with their professional learning communities. Sometimes it's both of those hours, but it's at least one. We also use those early release days where we're engaged in professional development to do that as well. Our teachers also have a common prep period by department. So the math department's all a period two, the English department's all a period one. We have explored ways that our, we're engaged in conversations about how our staff is using that time. And if that's not sufficient, then, then what's the value in that period and how else maybe could we use that time? We've talked about having a common duty period instead of a common prep period. And that way there, we could relieve staff by PLCs from their duty on a given day during the school day to have them collaborate. We've not decided on any one thing yet. But we are involved in those conversations. I've uploaded as evidence into our NEASC report, agendas for our faculty meetings, survey data from the staff that I have issued, that I've created and issued to the staff about how they think collaborative time could be better allocated for them. So we have not decided on one and NEASC does not expect us to. But they want us to begin that process of trying to identify additional ways. So each of these priority areas, I'm confident that we have done great work in making progress there. And so I'm certain the feedback from them at the Decennial Accreditation were very positive. And so this obviously, in terms of action steps in the collaborative conference, this is the, the most important piece because it is a foundational element. That's why I'm choosing to focus on here in this meeting. All right? So not only do we have to have it, and we do have it, we, and this is a kind of a, a more detailed version of what it takes to be a Pembroke Titan, what it means to be an empowered learner. And those descriptors are in our handbook. Our, our students all have this document. Our staff all has this document. It adorns our building in many, many places. But in terms of developing a process for reporting out on it, beginning last fall, one year ago, our teachers sat down in professional learning communities and they combed over their curriculum documents. Okay? And they were looking at assessments that we already use. And I think one of the And I think one of the biggest drawbacks to the NEAS process prior to this particular model, this new model, was staff felt as though they had to create something just for NEAS. We had to just do something just for them. And then it would kind of go away. And they were really adamant about really not doing that. And so we said that if we are saying that our vision of the graduate requires you to be an empowered learner and a meaningful collaborator and an effective communicator and an engaged citizen, well, what assignments then are we already creating? Are we already assigning our kids that require them to do those things? And so they combed over their curriculum documents, and they looked at all those assessments that they are assigning our students, and they tied in on the curriculum document the pillar of our vision of the graduate that this assignment requires. Much like those documents already had the math frameworks, or the curriculum standards from the math frameworks are there. So those assessments are aligned to that already. We align them to our vision of the graduate. VOG1. That means that this assignment requires our students to be an empowered learner. VOG2. This assessment requires our students to use strong collaborative skills to be successful. And then we use these assignments, and the grades our students get on these assignments to measure how well they're progressing towards attaining the vision of the graduate. And I think in that way, it's organic, right? We're not creating new things for NEAS. It's stuff we're already doing, and so the buy-in from the staff was high. As I mentioned then, because we had been all year long identifying assignments that were going to help us measure student progress, we were able to report out on it on those term four report cards in June. However, to simplify things, because there are four pillars of our vision, we assign departments a responsibility for measuring and reporting out on one of those pillars. So for instance, our English and math departments are responsible for reporting out progress towards being an empowered learner. Those two departments report on that one pillar. Our visual arts and our world language department is reporting out on our students' progress towards achieving effective communication. Our special education departments and social departments are reporting out on their progress towards becoming engaged citizens. And our phys ed, science, and performing art departments are reporting out on how well they meaningfully collaborate. And so this key was on our term four report cards. It'll be on the term three report cards in January. You can see up top there VG1, VG2, VG3, VG4. And we're rating our students as either progressing, oh, I'm sorry, meeting, progressing, or not progressing. Those are the three categories that we assign to our students as they achieve this vision. This is a sample. That screenshot is from an actual student's report card in June. Obviously, the name is taken off that. But you can see this student did quite well, not only academically, but in terms of this student's progress towards achieving the vision of the graduate. Questions?
That's really comprehensive. I think, I guess one question, obviously, if somebody is not progressing, then their grades would also reflect that, it sounds like.
There should be a correlation.
Yeah.
Right? If you're getting, you know, Ds and Fs, and then all of a sudden you're meeting the standard, there's a question there of how's that happening, and vice versa.
Okay.
Sure.
Got it.
And by the way, even if a student is passing all of the graduation requirements set forth by this committee and is progressing towards the vision of the graduate, has not yet met it, they'll still graduate, right? You have not set as a condition of graduation that they're meeting this, right? That's not what you guys, that's not the intention either. Okay?
Good question. So like, is it like one assignment per class?
No, it's multiple.
Multiple per class. And then the other question I had was, do we have like a, are we going to put like a rubric or something on the report card that says like, you know, meeting, progressing, you know, like, because I don't think it, I don't think it says it on it.
So I don't think it does, and I think we can. I think the concern was making it really busy on that report card. But certainly, it makes a lot of sense, right? You have to know what are the options here, right?
Because we deliver reports electronically, we could link it, right?
Yeah.
Because people don't know, we know what it means because we're sending it here.
Right. No, so that's all part of the growth process, right? So when I sent the report cards, it went out in June. Prior to that, I did send out email blasts with all that in there. And with the either meeting, progressing or not progressing. But I clearly get it. Not everyone reads those email blasts, or people forget. And if it's not on the report card, you want it right there, so it's all together. So that makes a lot of sense. And we've already talked about that as well, adding that somehow, some way, so that it's just easily referenced.
Yeah. I think if it's linked and then potentially having, if we're linking it, not putting just the rubric, like which departments potentially in that document, not necessarily, I know not too many words on the report card, but if it's linked.
Correct.
That could be easy.
Yep.
If that makes sense.
That was another piece of feedback I got this past spring for sure. And it all makes total sense.
I would love to see it somehow on the report. I know it's a little bit busy, but like it's, I know a lot of people are going to click on that link. And that's my concern. I know when I got the last JES, I was like, okay, I gotta remember which one's one, which one's three, like, are we going, we good, we bad? You know, so, you know, not a big deal.
Maybe a little chart.
Yep.
But I have to say, like, this was a ton of work. And like, it's clear how much work you did to get us to this point. So thank you so much for all the work and the presentation.
Thanks for your support.
Yeah.
It's been a lot of work, but I think in a lot of ways, like I said earlier, it's been, to me, it's been refreshing. I think the staff feels the same way, you know? I think that at the collaborative, one of the things we did without, you know, prolonging the meeting here, but when we did our collaborative conference report two years ago, we had to rate ourselves, and we rated ourselves as a lot of like developing. We're getting there, we're not quite there yet. And I recall at that time, and the staff had to vote on those ratings. We shared, we protected the report in a faculty meeting, we went through the entire report, we voted on those ratings. And I remember thinking to myself, I think that they're being hard on themselves. I think they do more than they give themselves credit for. And then NEAS came in and said, you're doing this. This is not developing. You're doing this. And the staff, I think, was so just reinvigorated for hearing that. And so now, in purpose of this visit, we had to go through the report again. And if we felt that in the past three years our ratings were changing, we had to fill out this form to write the changes. And they only gave you 10 boxes to change, 10 principal ratings. Well, we changed 12. I had to ask for additional boxes. Because I just think that the first time through, we're hard graders on ourselves, you know? And that's a good thing. It was a good problem to have when I had to call up liaison and ask for additional text boxes on the portal, so.
When do you expect the final report?
It's a great question. So I'm hearing things like six weeks. So I put in my email blast to the parents last Friday that will probably hear sometime mid-winter is what I'm guessing. The chair, so the committee's coming, and they're from schools such as Marshfield, Duxbury, Norton, Mansfield, Revere, and then Atlanta Charter School. Those are the six team members. The chair of the committee is the principal of Marshfield High School, Amy Setner. So it's good to have the familiarity there, right? You know, I know her, we were colleagues, we worked closely together. So when I was on one, I went on a Christian visit as I was preparing to lead our school through one. I went on one just for my own edification, and I went to Silver Lake. So they don't see that proximity as a bad thing, they see it as a good thing. They don't want to be threatening. They don't want, they want to be a welcoming experience. So having familiar faces in the room does kind of set folks at ease a little bit, so.
That's great. It sounds like there's been a lot of work over the years with teachers, department heads, and all of that, so.
The whole school.
And, you know, obviously you as well. So great job to everybody who put in the work for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay.
Do you want the mouse back?
No, nobody else is clicking anything. You don't have to stay, but you can if you want to. I'm not kicking you out, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. So the first thing in my report is a consideration for first read of your 24, 25 school community goals. So I will just front load this with, I think what Allison did was just compile everything that was sent the last time and put it into categories. In no way, shape, or form would I ever recommend that you have two, four, six pages of goals. So some work needs to be done here to narrow this down a little bit. I think you all identified two folks to work on some of this, right? True statement.
We have big goals.
The goals.
Big plans.
Yeah.
It might be more of a, sorry, strategic plan, maybe. Like, long-term, we'll have to break it up over time.
So I think those two people should get together and narrow this down a bit with feedback from the rest of the committee, right? So this is your opportunity to take a look at everything that came in in one cohesive document and offer some feedback. I wouldn't anticipate bringing this back for a second read next week. I think you need a little bit more time with it.
Yeah.
But I think it was important that Allison took the time to put it all together as opposed to the seven different places. So whenever that two-member working group needs, I'm happy to sit with you all and Jess and Mary Beth too and kind of work through what is a measurable, attainable goal in some of these. Because some of them are great, but they're not. I'm not sure how we would ever show any progress, so.
Does anybody have any feedback based on the first draft?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of things that we've been talking about that I saw reflected here. I think overall, I definitely agree, we have to think about what is going to be most important for us in the next year and then maybe map out what's more, you know, important in the next three or five years as we think about our long-term plan. So I think that while it's a lot of information, it was, I think, getting us to a place where we were able to put ideas together to see both the short and long-term vision. So I'm imagining we'll need to break it down by, you know, prioritize. Maybe it's like high, medium, low, right?
Yeah, I was kind of thinking like tier one, tier two, tier three, kind of. Something, we'll see.
Yeah.
Ava, what do you thought?
I mean, going through this, when I did, I'm just actually on the page now, I kind of looked at a couple of goals. They almost could be one with the financial stewardship, planning, facilities, maintenance, stability. That to me strikes me almost as kind of like a one category thing personally. I view it as a great template, similar in view with Erin. I think there's a lot here. And he said, how can you measure some of these things? Not without a heck of a challenge. But I think is, and I hate to call it a first draft, I don't want to insult anyone, but I think it's a first draft.
That's totally fine.
It's a great document, but just needs to be, you know, squeezed a little bit, that's a nice way of putting it.
Do we have to take it on the second read of the next year?
No, you don't have to. If you don't take it within 30 days, we have to just suspend one of the policies in place. But I'll keep an eye on the timeline, I've got it in my calendar, so.
One question I had for you, Erin. What would you say, based on what you're seeing in schools and hearing from teachers and administrators, are the biggest priorities from this? Like, what might be a higher priority based on what you're hearing?
So I think what you hear consistently across the board is about professional development, making sure we're allocating resources for that and for really prioritizing curriculum materials when we go through the budget process. We're doing a lot of great things here. There have been times when, I believe, teachers feel as though we're trying to do too many great things at once. So really having a thoughtful plan on how we're rolling out different curriculum. Obviously, we've been talking a lot about phonics and early literacy here at this table. There's a science conversation that needs to happen at the elementary level. There's a math conversation that needs to happen at the middle school. So, you know, really, really planning that out in a manner that makes sense for staff. I'm not sure that everything that you all have here would align with what staff are thinking as what's important. Some of these are a little bit bigger than the day-to-day operations of a school building. But I do think definitely training, professional development, social, emotional health and wellness continues to be the area where teachers are hungry for information and tools to put in their toolbox. So continuing to prioritize that. And at nauseam, you've heard what technology looks like here. And I think, you know, Mr. Tinker has done a nice job with his tech scorecard the last time, and he's presented a couple of times, obviously on the heels of what Brandon Hall was presenting. We have a lot of devices and not a lot of staff. We have gotten a much better infrastructure, but it's still not where it needs to be. So really, you know, harnessing some of those infrastructure pieces, I think, allow us to do some of the other things that you have listed here.
Got it. That's really helpful.
Only that I read something in the goals here, and I want to say is it HAM, that has a whole AI controversy. Are we, it was not ignorant, but are we prepared for something like that, or?
I was wondering.
Yeah, so you have a little bit of language in your handbook about AI. You know, there's obviously the controversy, is it working harder or working smarter, right? So there's, teachers are continually having that conversation at faculty meetings during PLCs. It's really a tool, and how can we best educate students to use it as a tool and not in replace of actual work? We've talked about how much in-person writing happens in the classroom on demand as opposed to take it home and write it. You know, what can we control and what can't we control, and how do we focus our energy on that, so.
And there's actually in this, there's a report from the U.S. Department of Ed that came out in October. So part of, one of the things I think that I had provided was about taking a look at that report and figuring out the ways in which we can include that in our policies and just the ways that we work with students to make sure we're not ending up like a.
Yeah, I think Jonathan did a presentation here last spring. And, you know, we're happy to continue to educate you all too, because it is, it's one that's constantly changing.
Moving fast.
Well, it's funny that when you see it on television, you're not sure which side of the argument you want to be on. Is the kid so smart that he was smart enough to do it? Or was the school so misprepared they weren't prepared for him to do it? You know, it's kind of one of those, it's the devil you know versus the devil you don't know. And I'm saying to myself, if I was sitting on a jury and I went to a jury trial, I'm not sure. I could honestly make a decision without hearing, you know, hours of probably testimony. But you say to yourself, the kid apparently seems like a very good student, and I'm not sure what we're supposed to be talking about in public per se. You know, so he was smart enough and wants to use it. And then yet, something about it, you know, went around school policy or kind of gray area a bit. And I was like, I think it's an intriguing argument that's not going to get settled for a while.
It builds on the conversation of how much help is too much help, right? So we often say to students to run your essay through Grammarly, right? To see, to fix your grammatical errors. But that does a fair amount of rewriting and rewording. You know, so where is the line? Where is it no longer your work and it's somebody else's work? So I think, you know, teachers are constantly talking about it. I think it's an interesting topic to kind of explore. I think, you know, Jess, Mary Beth, and I will tell you, we use it far more frequently than we have this year than we did last year. You can use it for so many different things. I mean, I use it to help me with my kid's math homework, so is he cheating or I'm cheating? I don't know, somebody's.
Yeah, when I jokingly say I have part robot brain, because I use it all the time for everything. I think it makes life easier. So it's more about, I think, from my perspective, figuring out how we empower kids to use it the right way versus using it as a tool to just not do the assignment themselves.
And that's where we started last year. There was initially, I think, the reaction was like, okay, let's just shut it down, we'll go guardian it. Nobody will be able to access it. And we really were thoughtful about, that's not the right way to approach this, because this is their lives. They're going to be using this tool for the rest of their lives. So how do we teach them to use it responsibly? There's a spectrum of sort of skills that are outlined by professional AI people that say like, it's great for brainstorming, or it's great for finding resources, but then you need to go and take the next steps. And what are the next steps? And how do you make that, as Erin was saying, how do you make that work your own so that you are not? And a lot of it will eventually, I think, end up, there will be more writing on demand in classrooms. Because I think that's the one way you know exactly what's happening in your classroom, which is not necessarily a bad thing.
The little blue booklets, yeah.
No more blue books. We can still do it online. And we actually have another tool that we've been using probably since you were there too, turnitin.com. So turnitin.com picks it up right away. And obviously, your AI chat box writes a whole lot differently than your 10th grader. So your teachers are picking it up too. But I think we wanted to progress slowly in terms of how we looked at it and how we rolled it out in terms of it being a punitive thing and thinking more about how can this be a learning experience? And I think it will evolve into the handbook in some way, but we wanted to take it slowly, so.
Thank you.
Okay, motion for first read?
Sound move.
Call in favor?
Aye.
The second thing in your packet under my report is similar to what you took up last time with the Habermock Library. This is the list from North Pembroke. I misspoke last time. I thought you all had already approved the North Pembroke list, but it had been compiled last spring, but did not come to you. I think Kate Union is just going to clean up the libraries as she goes. I shared with you electronically the catalog. Um, I shared with you electronically the catalog of titles.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Can I have a motion?
I, I do have a question.
Sure.
What do you, when somebody is saying, this is the library list, I'm just.
Yeah, you don't have the library list in front of you because it's 817 pages.
Yeah, I agree. So some of them like just said outdated, right? But it might have been like.
It just means no kids have checked it out. Um, you know, she's making space on the shelves for things that kids are, are bringing in. So I think there was like, even on that first page, I just think there's something from like 2016 that said outdated.
Yeah.
It was like a, um, I don't know if it was a, it was some kind of character. I can't remember the name of it off the top of my head, but.
Yeah.
So it's.
Yeah, so I saw a few of those that were newer.
Yeah, so your policy on weeding the library, um, gives context to when, how to determine if something's outdated. It has to have not been checked out in like five years or something, not been checked from the library.
So some of them were checked out. And that's why I'm asking, and they were sent, but it said.
Some of them, if you look, it was multiple copies. So there were seven copies on the shelf and she was weeding five and leaving two.
Oh.
Um, I went through it just to look at, because obviously some of the topics jump out at you, right? Like, because my kids just finished elementary school, I'm like, I can't read that book. And it was a multiple copy situation. It wasn't just a singular copy, so.
Okay.
Uh, but Christine, um, Murphy at the library, the librarian at the high school is also, um, part of the conversation we were weeding also, there's a certified library.
And so after you get rid of all the books and she like, I don't know, she.
So this library has been weeded. If you look around, what's on the shelves, had, those books have been taken off and their inbox is back, um, back there. So this is what the library looks like after you take 817 pages of books off the shelf. And there's plenty of books here.
Yeah.
Um, but Kate also gets a budget allocation, or the libraries have a budget allocation every year to replace, um, books and materials. So there's a whole host of new, new titles that come in each year to each of the elementary schools.
Okay.
Is there a motion to accept for approval of the North Pembroke surplus library materials?
Sound moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
The last thing in my report is your October 1 enrollment numbers. I just forgot to put them in your packet the last time. Um, so you have all of the reports that we generally produce around the beginning of October. Um, a couple of things that I do want to point out to you, because we do talk a lot about declining enrollment and what that looks like. Um, so our enrollment from last year to this year has declined by 46 students. So that's 46 students across five buildings and 13 grades. That is not any huge number that would facilitate cutting a classroom or changing a program. Um, that's 1.9% of our total enrollment, which is considered statistically insignificant. Um, but I do think it's important for you all to know the number off the top of your head, right? So 46 kids, I think that's probably the, the question you get most asked in the produce at Stop and Chop, the produce department, David, or the frozen food department.
Yep.
Um, because everyone seems to be focused on a steep decline in our enrollment. That has leveled off. It has not been significant numbers in the past couple of years. It has been a handful here and there, which, um, is, is pretty much in, in line with what the decline in the birth rate has looked like. Um, in your packets, you'll see by building class, individual class size information, um, just to reiterate, we do have class size ideals. Um, so ideal class size K through two is 23 and under. Three to six is 25 and under. Um, we have just one classroom in the district that is above that ideal. There's a fifth grade class at Habermock with 26 students. Um, and we're talking about seven through 12, so secondary grades, we're talking about 28 and under. Um, at the middle school, we have three classes that are over 28. It's, um, two electives and then one section of accelerated English. Um, in general, at the middle school, our accelerated classes are generally a little bit bigger than our, um, color, right, regular math and regular English. That has been the phenomenon since I've been here. Um, at the high school, there are six classes that are over 28. Um, there's a music course, there's a PE course, that's not a, a huge concern. Um, there are three Spanish courses, um, that are over 28 students and one history course. So with the Spanish courses, um, you know, we all have some tough conversations and decisions to have on resources in the world language department as we move into, um, the next budget cycle and, you know, kind of prioritizing what, what the students are picking and where to put our resources. So that, there's more to come on that one. Katrina did reach out just before the meeting and ask for just some additional information about attrition. Um, obviously, um, going into middle school and going into high school is when we see a pocket of students transfer out, whether it's to a, a private school or parochial school. Um, you know, in years past, there's been a large vocational number. That's not the case so much anymore. Um, so I will share with all of you the past 10 years or so, because in your packet, you just have this year. We give it to you every year, but I wouldn't hope that you are compiling it on your own. So I'm happy to give you multiple years' worth of information on that. Um, there was one anomaly this year in third grade. It looks like there was more move outs over the summer than in years past. That's not the norm for us. It usually is spread a little bit across all the grades. You'll remember one year we had a, a big move in number in first grade and we added a teacher late in the summer. Um, so we do keep an eye on that as we go through, um, the summer months.
Are any of the transfers in coming back from private or coming back?
Yeah, we, Katrina and I had this conversation. So in 20, the class of 2025, so in 2021, there was, what, 15 students that transferred out to private schools. Um, six of them have transferred back to Pembroke High School. Um, so, yeah, we're always here with welcoming arms. So this is just an informational piece. If there's some piece of data in addition that you're looking for, happy to provide it.
Are numbers included in here for our out-of-district placements?
No, so these are just the students in our classroom. So if you took this number, the 2,286 enrollment number, that would not match to what our Chapter 70 number will look like when it comes out, um, in January. So the Chapter 70 number includes, uh, a calculation for the students that we have in a vocational or an Aggie school, or a calculation for the students that we have that go to out-of-district placements. It'll be a much larger number. Not much, but it is a number 2370 or so, I guess. These are just the students in front of us.
Okay.
And I, I know you mentioned also that the students moving out of district has kind of leveled off in the, in the past year or so.
Yeah, so, um, here what we have seen in the past is fam- young families moving in with kindergarten-aged children. So you'll see a couple of years, um, on the multi-year chart where there's a big, an increase for, um, elementary enrollment. So what we see in Pembroke is that the birth rate assigned, or the birth rate determined from five years ago is not reflect the students that show up for kindergarten. There's far more students that are coming into school, um, in Pembroke at the age of five than were born in the town of Pembroke five years ago, which is, that's a great thing, right? That's what you want. Um, birth rate is down across the board, so there's not a lot we can do about that here. Um, but, um, you know, there are, there are some families that help with that in town. There's a lot of multiple families here. Um, but, you know, I, I think continuing to see families moving into town with schools. Transfer out as they're going into ninth grade is also a great sign. Having kids come back is something that we really, really enjoy. I mean, Jess will talk about it when she gives her presentations, but we're always actively looking to see if any of our out-of-district kids can rejoin us. I think there's one or two that are in pipeline, which is great.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, um, subcommittee liaison updates. So, um, Katrina and I, as policy subcommittee, were tasked to review the policies, um, suggested by our legal counsel. So that's what you see here in front of us. We took a couple of meetings to go through them and really make sure they were ready to go.
So why you see a lot of red is because that means they're new, right? So red means not, not something that exists. And when Joe was here, we talked about the fact that we do not have a policy AC for nondiscrimination. We do not have, obviously, ACR, ACA, ACAB. All of these ones are, are new to us. Um, the only two that are, um, not necessarily new are policy ACGB. Um, we did not name our Title IX Sexual Discrimination Grievance Procedure before. It was just grievance procedure and it was linked, um, on the policy website. Obviously, the correct coding for it is ACGB. Um, and then JIE, we had for many years, um, that's pregnant students. We had it for many years and we rescinded it back when we did that policy work, um, in the summer of '23. Um, but obviously, the recommendation is that you add that back in. So that is back in here with the edits that were suggested, um, by MAS. Um, in order to do one of them, which I think is ACAB, um, we have a policy right now, JIC-K dash R. Um, and that is, um, suggested that we replace that with ACGA, Civil Rights Grievance Procedure.
And so Jessica, everybody out there is aware, this is the, we're talking about Title IX from 1972. We're not talking about the new Title IX.
Correct. The only policy that references the new Title IX is JIE, Pregnant Students. And the changes to that policy include providing a lactation room for, for students who have returned to school after a baby. Um, that I think is, that's, that's the law anyways in Massachusetts. Um, but that is the only policy that references the final rule in 2024. That, that is the.
Okay. So.
The rest are the 1972, no.
So do, like, uh, so why did we put it in? Because it, just because it's the Massachusetts law?
It's the law in Massachusetts, so it exists. That, uh, Mass. R. 7184 talks about that. It's also in the Title IX final rule. So, and even if we didn't put the word final rule in there, our law would trump that, yes.
Yeah. So if, if the new Title IX final rule is completely rejected.
We'll just have to amend, we did just amend this footnote, this reference.
Just that little footnote, anything else is current law.
Correct.
Yeah, we checked all the cross-references and they all, like, if this is passed as a complete thing, all the cross-references are cr- correct between the policies.
So it's just a first read. You all obviously take some time. Um, I don't know if you want to do second read next week or if you want to wait till the first meeting in December, there's a significant amount of stuff in here. Totally up to you.
I guess it depends on how.
Yeah, it depends on you all, because we've looked at it.
Yeah.
And did you just copy this from the MAS, um, policy manual or did you add your own?
So we, it's not a direct copy from the MAS policy manual. There are some things, especially under the Title IX Grievance Procedures, that the new guidelines allow you to do that we don't think are best practice. So the single, um, single evaluator, there's.
Investigatory model.
Yeah, there's a, a couple of, um, things that we feel we were already doing better than what the timeline.
So we just didn't, some of it we didn't use, but we didn't add anything that MAS.
No, there's just pieces of theirs that we didn't choose to.
Yeah, I feel like it was just the grievance procedure. That was pretty much the only section where it was, we're getting language from Jessica based on what they've been doing and what has been working in alignment with the MAS. But there wasn't like random words we threw in there, just.
Other than the word Pembroke, we threw that in there everywhere we could.
Yes.
And anywhere that said he, she, we made they.
So do I have a consideration for first read for policy AC, ACR, ACA, ACAB, ACGA, ACGB, JIE, and then I'll do the last one separately. Is there a motion for that?
Sound moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then, uh, consideration for first read to rescind policy JIC-K dash R?
Sound moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Also, while we're doing subcommittee liaison updates, um, I know a couple of you voiced an interest in giving an update on the MAS, the MAS joint conference that you went to, so.
Yeah, um, I can start unless anybody else wanted to. So I, uh, we had a great, so Sue and, um, Allison and I went to the MAS conference and it was great. Um, had a lot of opportunities to learn, um, best practices and connect with other folks doing similar work in other districts. Um, so I think I can speak for myself, but probably for us all, we all learned a lot and are excited to bring these, um, pieces of knowledge back to the work that we do, both on the school committee and in our policy, in our subcommittees as well. Um, so some of the sessions I went to were, you know, strategic problem solving, um, school and municipal collaboration. Um, there was a session on collective bargaining, update on Title IX, um, the art of listening. So how to leverage, um, community feedback, which was a really, um, interesting session. And then I also took the Charting the Course, um, Professional Development, um, session as well, which was over two days. Um, but one, um, thing that I wanted to share, which I didn't get to go to this session because I had a client meeting sadly, but I did get the fancy swag, um, where they talked about the dignity index. And since I didn't go, I feel like maybe somebody else can mention it, but.
Yeah, I went to this one, so it was, I'd never heard of it before. It was, um, Timothy Shriver, um, it's a company, I think, a thing that he does. But it was fascinating, um, just kind of showing a way of, you know, like responding to people, but then also just how you kind of, um, just read the room, I guess, with different situations online, in person. Um, you know, he tied it back a lot to the Special Olympics and just the dignity of having, um, you know, different people involved and perspectives and whatnot. Um, you know, it's, I love, uh, professional development, kind of with this for anybody in the town, not just school-related, because it really, um, you know, um, I can read just some, some of it. Honoring someone's dignity can be difficult, especially when such a, situations get heated. Follow these steps when stress arises and join the movement of Americans easing divisions, preventing violence and solving problems by choosing dignity over contempt. Um, you know, the dignity pledge is, as an American who knows and loves my country, I am convinced there is no America without democracy, no demos- democracy without healthy debate and no healthy debate without dignity. Therefore, I pledge to do more to treat others with dignity and not contempt. So it was probably one of the best things I did while I was there.
I think it's something you could definitely use in memory of.
Person, but, um, he even brought up, um, some things from Ted Lasso that I thought was like, you know, really, oh, I guess he didn't do it, it was another one of the sessions I did. But, um, it was, it was fantastic, so.
Yeah, and I think I, if we could do something like, I think it's really helpful because it's not saying we're going to shut down debate, because we all clearly have different opinions and that's okay and we should. And that makes a healthy debate, but it's about being kind and understanding to the people you're debating with. Yeah. So I, I love it.
Yeah, I think it was, it was great, so.
And I spent most of my time going, not surprisingly, to different budgets.
Yeah, I know.
Amazing, so, which I did really learn a lot. It was very helpful and connected with a lot, a lot of other school committee members, which is.
Yeah, I think after my second in a row of budget ones, I had to do something else because it was, it was getting me a lot of, a lot of that.
I run to them and you run away.
I know. I, I did two in a row and then I forget what the third one was and I went to a different one instead. But it was, everything I went to was, um, great. We're probably going to drive Erin crazy, but.
No, no.
Fantastic, but I think my, uh, my school goals definitely reflect some of the ideas we saw. So, um, another question, I, a couple of things that also came up from there is where are we in the budget process? Budget Subcommittee?
Yep, so Budget Subcommittee hasn't met, um, to talk about the FY '26 budget yet. Um, we were supposed, well, Patrick and I were supposed to meet with Tracy and Bill tomorrow evening. That was postponed. Um, they're looking at a date next week instead. Um, once that meeting happens and there's some sort of information shared at the town level on what the, the finances look like, um, then we would schedule the first budget, budget sub. Sue and I talked a little bit today about if it doesn't happen next week, what can we do to kind of move it along? Um, but she also asked if I could provide you guys kind of just with a picture of where we are in FY '25. Here's what the budget was, here's what we've spent, here's what we're projecting to spend. So I'm happy to put that together too, so that you guys just have an added glance of kind of where we're at for '25 while we figure out what '26 is going to look like.
I think touching on that, we should realize we now have two-thirds of a new delegation coming in. Kathy Lanatra did win, um, and I know she's just a Bryantville side of Pembroke. Um, Ken Sweetsy, uh, won and Dylan Fernandez won. So Ken, I'm familiar with Kathy, I've met a few times. Dylan, I couldn't pick out of an empty room.
Sounded like it, that, that, I don't know if you've heard that at all. Sounded like it, that, that, I don't know if you've heard that at all. But it, it sounded like it might be coming down from a state level, so I don't know. It's something that I think we should talk about.
Does it have a budget implications, whatever it is?
So I, the, one of the towns I talked to there was, and I think the grant's over, that they used a grant to get the Yonder Pouches, I think they're called.
Yes.
But you put in the phone, and it locks it with some sort of, I think, that was Hullbrook, and I think Brockton has something similar. I don't think, I don't know, it seems like the state's really good at telling us what to do with no money, so.
It's, there's, just on a fluke, I happened to work at Conset this weekend, and they have Yonder Pouches, and they basically look like a big glass case that you slide your phone in, it clips through type thing, and then you need a thing that looks like a small symbol that opens it, you know, and takes it out. I, I think that's going to be really controversial.
So we have, I mean, we have a cell phone policy. It's at, at the, at the middle school level, it's no cell phones. At the second, at the high school level, it is teacher discretion, and we have, you know, cell phone hotels, which are like, they're shoe organizers, right? So you're sliding your, your phone in when, when you come in. I do feel like that's, that's a cultural conversation and not something that could be like a sweeping statement by the Department of Elementary and Secondary.
Yeah, I hope not. That kind of worried me when I was hearing that, that that's something that could come down.
Yeah, and part of the, one of the sessions I went to about, you know, listening to stakeholders has given me some ideas about, you know, just how we solicit feedback and if there are ways that we can have, you know, conversations periodically with community members.
Yeah, so we've done some roundtable stuff in the past, and I would anticipate those would be some of the action steps that are coming out of the goals as we work with that.
Cool, sounds good.
Our next meeting is next.
Your next meeting is the 19th. You will see school improvement plans, you will see a bunch of other stuff that I just don't know yet.
Sounds good.
Are we 6 o'clock or are we 6:30?
I think Patrick's coming, so it'll be 6:30. Let's see, has other children that are being, being in that? Christine just honors.
Anything else?
You all picked December meetings, or you did not pick December meetings?
Um, I don't think...
I actually don't, no.
We have. First and third. First is the third.
The first is the third, and the third is the 17th?
I think we should stick with those if we can.
Yeah.
Because I think with the holidays and that's...
The first and the seventh.
So the third and 17th?
Yeah, that works.
Yep, because we, and hopefully we'll have some sort of budget...
Hopefully.
...up to meeting, update.
You should have Maintenance of Effort at one of those too, just depending on the timing of budgets up, so.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.